Allendale Land News Board, in which formal action will be taken on the items listed on the agenda and upon any other matters which may properly become before the Land News Board. The requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied through posting on the public bulletin board, and in municipal buildings, and in the borough website, and by publication in the record on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, with copies being sent to the Ridgewood News and the Herald News. Certain agenda items will be open to the public for comment and/or testimony. The Board will advise the public when such matters are open for their comment and/or testimony. Before we begin, if I've read and returned me a salute to the flag, please.
Plural means to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under our, and that is well, there is the end of that.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler. And that's it. Thank you.
We have the mayor, Andy, and.
And Walter Conti, they're all absent.
All right. Next on our agenda is approval of the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. I reviewed them. I know they've been reviewed a couple of other times. Has anybody had any comments, changes, additions? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to accept, please?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Vice Chairwoman Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler.
All right. Next on our agenda are the resolutions. The first resolution is application file number L U B two thousand and twenty-five dash zero nine, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two. The applicant is Keith and Jennifer Pachetti, four fourteen Canterbury Avenue in Allendale, block four eleven, lot three. The application was in addition to a house and a deck expansion, including two seventy dash sixty-four B, parentheses two, two seventy dash sixty-three A, parentheses three, two seventy dash fifty-four D, and two seventy dash B. Council, would you ask me for a briefing on this for the resolution?
Residential application for the Board that was approved by the Board at the last public meeting. We discussed a series of standard and unique conditions to be imposed. They included the standard verbiage of all fees and assessments to be paid, or recommendations of the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five engineer report shall be complied with. The unique conditions include a few others, that the porch shall not be enclosed, that no new exterior mechanical units would be installed. There were existing exterior mechanicals that were previously shown to clean the standby generator. They're going to remain in their current locations. And we talked about the property walkway being adjusted to accommodate that non-movement of that equipment. We discussed no lighting of the rear deck. New lighting would be limited to the front porch areas adjacent to the doors, and as all detailed in the approved plans, nothing beyond this approved plan details. Landscaping plan was requested to be revised, subject to the satisfaction of Mr. Breland's office. The applicant was asked to investigate the satisfactory nature of the utilities that service the property, and that would be subject to Mr. Breland's ultimate review and sign off as well. There was another provision. Stormwater management implementation. We discussed that at length with this applicant. We talked about the site drainage and the water recharge chambers, their locations on the plans, and we noted that they were part of the Van Cleve engineer report. They were subject to Mr. Breland's continual review during post-approval resolution compliance. And they might be amended and modified by Mr. Breland's office during post-approval review as he deems necessary. So those are subject to Mike's ongoing review. We had a discriminatory error in the engineer report that we talked about being modified, reflected at the breakfast. That would be one, not two stories. And that was it for this one, by way of the unique conditions of the Board.
Also, I'm telling you that we had a resident that did most impacted. The divided causes.
Interesting testimony for sure. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as detailed and written?
Make a motion, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler.
Yes.
All right. Second resolution now. Is application file number L U B two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three. The applicant began responding. One oh one Austin Avenue in Allendale, block five oh six, lot one. And it was a construction of a one-story addition and an enlargement of an existing deck. The applicant came back. Before I said, we were asking some question. If there is it. Council again, please.
Several of the prior applications, residential application, this applicant appeared close saying without a benefit of the council for their bulk relief. The standard conditions were incorporated to the approval, including all fees and assessments to be paid for Phil's issue, compliance with Mr. Breland's August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five report. We discussed unique conditions on this that are memorialized in the terms of the improvement, including any new exterior material mechanical equipment shall be screened and will comply with all yard setback requirements, because they were not fully identified on the plans that we saw. So they would have to meet the yard requirement. It's real sitting back here for further relief. The applicant confirmed that no existing street trees will be removed. We memorialize that as a condition of the approval. There was an issue with the segregation of the in-laws. We wanted to ensure that it would not ultimately turn into an illegal two-family. So we had parameters as part of the approval, and they're going to be held to the plan details where it is accessible from the main portion of dwelling to the the in-law areas, if you will. And we have a condition memorialized, the addition shall remain open and accessible to the existing residents, shall not be utilized as a second separate dwelling unit. And just to confirm, the Board did not grant relief to modify the use of the property to a two-family residence. There was no use for leave granted. Any attempt to utilize the same would be illegal and forcible through code enforcement.
That's what that should be.
It is. Yes, that's all a condition of the approval. Similar conditions relate to the utilities that they have to confirm to the satisfaction of Mr. Breland's office that the entirety of that has been standard edition, if they're satisfactory, disturbs the property in its proposed conditions. And the same application of the prior matter is about stormwater management implementations. It's subject to Mr. Breland's ultimate review, and if Mr. Breland identifies during post-approval reviews that stormwater management controls need to be modified or amended, it is subject to his ultimate discretion. On this application, we also discussed the applicant obtaining a solar movement permit and submitting a plot plan.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution as just detailed? Thank you. Second? Thank you.
What was that? Second?
Second.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler.
Third resolution. Application file number L U B two thousand and twenty-four dash four. Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. Allen Deli Deviltation and Healthcare. Eighty-five Harrington Road, Allenville, New Jersey, oh seven four oh one. Block six oh one, lot seven. Constructed eighty-five forty-one square foot addition to a non-conforming assisted living nursing and skilled nursing. This one, you have a. Explain what we have, how we have to.
Sure. Thank you. So this application, after a series of public hearings over the course of a year, was ultimately denied by the Board on a motion to deny, which passed. The applicant required significant relief. There was D one use variance relief. There was additional use variance relief for floor ratio of non-conformance of the proposed structure. There was a number of bulk variance items that were sought as well, and there were existing non-conforming conditions that some of which were being exacerbated, some mitigated, and others were not being modified at all. So there was D relief, there was C relief, there were waivers. After the applicant went through all of their witness deck testimony at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board was not compelled to vote affirmatively based upon the proofs presented by the applicant. So the application failed. And the vote was accordingly, it was not a split vote. There were, I believe, two votes in the direction to vote negatively on the motion. The motion was to deny. But the motion passed, and the application was ultimately denied by the applicant for this proposed expansion of a facility in a residential zoning district where it exists luckily, but was not permitted to be expanded following the conclusion of the testimony in the prosecution of the applicant.
Chairman. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there any discussion on the resolution or what we just heard? And that we're all clear? All right. So then may I have a motion, please, to accept the resolution as written in just detail to my counsel?
Make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
My second.
Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler.
We're through all the resolutions. We're going to go right into the public hearings right now. The first one, application file number two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve. Michael Mall in Santa Marino, two forty-six Park Avenue in Allendale. Lot twenty-two oh six, lot seven. It's the application is for construction of an attached deck. Just while you've been before us before, so.
I have.
You know the drill.
Yep.
We have to still swear, you remember, this is it. This is a new application.
It is a new application. We're not going to proceed with the previous ones.
Okay.
It's a, just a deck instead of the extension.
Thank you. Please take your name for the record, spell your last name, write an address.
Michael Mailey, two four six Park Avenue.
Right answer. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
That's not the word.
Okay, so. So, again, you've been before us, we did, you went through your last application. Okay, so that is now off the table. And you're doing something. You're before us to do something different.
Correct. Essentially, we are here, or I am here. Apologies, my wife's age, but we have instead of going hunting the kitchen out, we just want to put, replace the deck that is already pre-existing in that space. It doesn't have anything to do with the previous plans, because we were going to be building out on the house itself, both the second floor and the first floor. But this is just basically replacing the deck that is not really suitable for use at this point in time. And it's going to have some of the same problems we had previously, but they're, it's a much smaller situation. The deck already pre-exists.
The deck already exists.
Yeah, you already have a deck there. It's just going to go a little bit more closer to the, to the driveway, which would have been home. Which would have been a part of the new house.
So I just, perhaps, I just, just want to get around it for a minute. You currently have a deck. You're going to replace the desk, make it slightly bigger. If you ever do the work that we talked about.
It's not.
Perhaps, I know there are two independent things that I have to ask. You were going to volunteer to go ahead.
We're not going to be proceeding down that path. And if we were to, it would be simply something different because of what happened.
Okay, okay. All right, so. I'm, I'm clear. Board? Okay, we've all seen. We've all seen the plans. We're failure, you know. As I, as I said, the applicant is very familiar with our process here.
And.
Go ahead. No, please, please.
I mean, it looks, it's inside, so you. It's still hidden behind the house, not, you know, getting out from the side. It just looks like, are you going back just a little bit?
It's really, maybe, maybe I think it's three and a half inches. We'll be familiar with the plans. I don't think it's any further, much more further. It's actually no further than the cantilever deck itself.
If you look real close, you can see there's a dash line on the, the plan that shows the existing foot print of the deck.
You're looking at.
I see.
In the plot plan. Oh, it is, I mean, it is, it is technically slight, it is larger than the existing deck, and it's going to increase the non-conformities that currently exist. So, you know, as a result of that, we didn't prepare an application, but we reviewed, a report to review the application and visited the site. But the zoning officer was unable to issue a zoning permit because it's exacerbating, it's exacerbating some non-conforming conditions. And it's going to be, you know, essentially located too, too close to the existing garage. And you know, it's not an exact replacement in. So that's a slight.
But. But in your opinion, not necessarily any.
Still going to be located behind the house. I think when you drive down the street, you're not going to even realize that that was changed. Other than this deck is going to look nicer than the other.
Correct. That's the ball.
You're conceding that. So, so New Jersey state law is, is, it's actually smart disregard. When you come in for an application before a board, whether it's residential, commercial, and it contravenes a prior approval, where they both cannot live harmoniously together, where if you overlay one on the other, they contradict and some plants and replaces the prior one, it doesn't supplement and augment it. You have no problem with the condition of the approval that says if and when you want to revert back to your old approved plan, you will succumb to the jurisdiction of the Board and return to the Board to prosecute that application, correct?
Yes, and I believe that the, the plans will only last one calendar year anyway, so I would have to do it anyway. I don't have any plans of redoing the deck in a year.
The sunset provision aside, yeah, this is, this is the actual case law, but yeah, so if you're fine with that condition, I think it's got to be imposed anyway, but I don't want it to be a surprise to you.
Okay.
And it would be part of the resolution as well.
That's fine.
And then as far as I mean, the only, the only, the only thing that I see is the property behind you, and you already have, there's already landscaping there, so, you know, to our engineers' point. From what I'm seeing that you want to do is nobody's, I mean, you're adding three or four inches over that.
Not a replacement.
Yeah, not whatsoever. It's not like you're creating a new outdoors entertainment area, you're just replacing one with one that's.
Board members, any questions? Okay. Anybody in public, any comments on what we just heard here relative to this application? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Any further discussion? Okay, I am satisfied with what's here. Engineering, I mean, again, Michael.
I don't think there's any, we don't, our office doesn't have any concerns. It's, you know, it's a deck, it's not considered in progress coverage. It doesn't trigger the thresholds from a plot plan or soil movement, so whatever action I think the Board takes will be the end of my involvement, and then they'd be able to apply for some stuff.
Okay, and all the puddings, everything else here. That's proposal good.
That'll be reviewed by the code official.
Okay. All right, do I have, if there's no further discussion? Counsel, yes, sir, okay. A motion to approve?
Make a motion to.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen. Board Member Wazala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Dallo. Chairman Sarico. Board Member Butler.
Yes.
This will be, this will be more aligned. Don't, don't say you can start doing anything you need to do, but officially. All right.
Be sure you're done, but you're.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Next on our public here. Application file two thousand and twenty-five dash thirteen, James and Dana Boyle. Four fifteen Canterbury, lot, I'm sorry, lot four ten, lot three. The application is for the additions and renovation of an existing single-family residence, seeking relief of rear setback pursuant to two seventy dash fifty-four D. Thank you for coming before us and. Most of us on the Board were like mixing up some of the addresses here, because we just heard something about your name was supposed to be. Or last month.
Yeah.
Having said that.
I know you'll be testifying. Will you both be testifying as well, because we can swear you all in? Okay, so we'll start everybody's name. Mary, name and address for the record, please.
Mary Scow, C plus Architects, two forty, but specific avenue of Allendale.
I don't know if that's on, can you just? Thank you.
Please, for support, could you just provide your name and address for the record, please?
Dana Boyle, four fifteen Canterbury Drive.
And James Boyle, four fifteen Canterbury.
You know, we can swear you in all the same time. You all swear to, that the testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you, folks. Your license remains current and standing in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I don't hear the point of this, but. So this application is actually revised from a previous application back in two thousand and twenty-two. There was a larger proposed renovation back in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're actually coming back with a smaller plan. That renovation was approved. The project got put on hold, and now they've kind of reassessed and we're coming back for something that's smaller. So you'll see that in surveillance. I don't know if you distributed it to everybody, but there was a letter.
No, I didn't, but I was.
We're going to go through it. You'll go through it.
Yeah, so there was, again, you know, we visited the site, reviewed the application. We didn't generate a new report for this application, because a previous application that was a little bit larger in scope was approved by the Board. We will probably go through some of the comments that we had in the previous application process, just to make sure the appropriate comments are addressed in this one, and the Board should approve the application if those conditions get carried through.
Thank you.
So I'll go through the application, and then as I, I'll know any differences from the previous application.
Thank you.
The proposed application, we're here for a rear yard setback. Previously, we were here for a side yard setback, but we're not building on that side, and now the selling requirements have also changed. We don't need to apply for that side yard setback. The house sits on a very irregular shaped lot, though the road is curved there. So the house sits in the innermost point of the curve. It sits just over forty feet from that point. And it's not rectilinear at all, and it's kind of like a pie, like a console shape. So the back left hand, if you're looking at the front door, the back left hand side of the property, there's a chunk of property that's kind of unusable because of this irregularity. So the house, you know, is kind of square to the curve of the road. The lot is largely undersized as well. The proposed addition, we're going to reconfigure some of the first floor space into a guest suite. And we're proposing the new family room at the back of the house, and then the deck. That, that, that design and shape and size is the same as the things that were approved there. We're asking, right now, the rear yard setback is forty-five point four, and we're requesting a thirty-six point nine rear yard setback. On the second floor, that's where the largest change is. Previously, we were going to put a primary suite over the existing kitchen and living room in the backhand side of the house. Kind of a, not really a third floor, but it's, it's a split level, so in split level terms, it's that third floor. We revised it, and we're just going to expand the second floor over the existing garage. So we're going to expand the primary suite in its existing location and add a fourth bedroom from that floor for the third child. Previously, we were adding a total of eleven twenty-two square feet. Now we're adding six hundred and four square feet. So the bulk of the house has been down, put a bit of the reduced size. The total square foot of the house at the end of the day is thirty-four oh four. Again, the irregular sized shape of the lot, and the now, the house is placed kind of on the shallow depth of the lot, so that's why we're seeking the variance for that rear yard setback to be able to construct the the family room and the deck. It's also should be known that the backyard here is the bulk course.
That's what, yeah, that's what I was going to ask you to make sure we detailed.
Yes, so. And the other thing I want to note too is that we're still well below that allowable floor area ratio. We are allowed to have twenty-two point nine, and we're at sixteen point seven eight. So the house is still in keeping with the scale of homes in the property. It's just that the way the property is shaped, it's really causing us to have that that variance for us for the rear yard. And this is, you know, obviously, we've shrunk it, and it's very efficient way to add on to the house. If you were to go out to the left, if you were right, we'd be at, we're pressing side yard variances. Thought that was too much for the neighbors going in the back where the golf courses, there's no over back there, please, guys. It makes no sense for the community to be able to see it from the front of the house. So very minimal impact to the overall or the, the, or miss, and just the effects of the basic properties.
You said it, the work that you're doing over the garage side. Okay, although in the random, can you explain what's over? I, I got everything split apart, so. What's over the delivery?
The living room and the kitchen are on the left, and we are just dividing the dormer there. Get a little bit clearer, sort of like, yes. No, no floor area within that area. Previously, we did have that full area jump out, but we've removed.
So again, just, just looking at the plans, everything's on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Looking at the house.
The only thing on the left-hand side is the back of the deck, and part of it is covered. So in your rear elevation, you'll see the.
And I did note, as you pointed out, it was all set over that's the back of the property, and that's all the dog park, so the, the thing shouldn't be back.
No impact.
If we might get a couple of.
Yes.
I also thought it was anything to be very tired of, okay, but.
Yeah. Well, it's probably going to be fired. It's just that you're going to move it so it's more centered.
Does the house have skew fire?
Yes, yes.
Michael, do you have? This is for, you know, for the Board. Is there anything that you want to bring up right now? And given what is.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is certainly I would consider this less impactful than the previous proposal, and that wasn't considered to be a detriment. No, we had asked some questions that maybe we can get some answers to on the previous application. You know, the applicant, as part of the application, there was, you know, color renderings. We assume that the the addition in the house to look similar to the, to the renderings, both in materials and color. And the existing landscaping will remain to the degree that it can. Is there any plans for supplemental landscaping and then at this point?
One, probably not, you know, true, add more stuff in the back.
Okay, but, and then you'll try to maintain whatever landscape that, yeah, that you have. Any, any exterior lighting proposed associated with this?
Exterior doors, well, Wisconsin, that the exterior doors to comply.
Do you see anything runoff waters?
We, we had asked them to consider addressing the, the downspouts as, as part of the previous approval, and we would ask them to, again, consider doing that as part of, part of this application.
Else come, interesting? That's great.
Let's see, the highlights.
Eric, can I assume, because maybe this is just the way you drew it. I'm page, I'm S K twelve. Where you have, I'm not centered on the fire, so I'm asking. We, we have, uh, I'm not centered on the, the fire pit, so I'm asking in five. The height is, isn't the height above the. Um, I, I don't know, I've asked you from.
You have to go three feet above anything within ten feet, so we'll, we'll double check that, that we're gonna comply with all that.
Okay.
You're talking about, like, the overall height of that, that shouldn't be, it may be a liar.
Okay.
So I gotta double test that.
Alright, that's fair. Um. The rest of this is, is all those pretty thorough. Um, which, 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 please, other items that need to be done here?
I really don't have much for it, that.
It just as an aside, that, that, that second gap fireplace is probably gonna be gas fireplace, so.
Yeah, I did know that, I did know that you had put it there.
Yeah.
Uh, the, um, contractor, something about looking at, putting gas in there, I think it was something on.
Yeah, yeah. Some of those details, I don't know, always find students when we come to you guys.
Except. Board members, questions, comments?
I'm onto SK two, is. I'm reading it, but I'm not too many guys, but I'm just only kind of looming out here is that. Doesn't look like you're any closer to the house, which is adjacent, left and right. It's eighty seven, I mean, that whole deck, if you move. Doesn't exist to that.
Oh, right, so that, yeah, we're not closer at the thirty three and the forty eight point five.
Or.
But this is it. Yeah, that eighty seven to the left of the deck, it's gonna be in that, in that area.
Okay, so that, that's the, the net addition, is that extension that goes out of the back.
Correct.
Right, so that, that's like in the. It actually is shorter. Now. Because it's probably that I can move towards its back corner of the house, any house.
Right, right, like that back corner, nothing's getting closer than that back. They, none of these houses, like, them and their neighbors, nobody sits parallel.
Has there been any dialogue?
Let me.
Mine is here.
We'll come to that.
Yeah, we're gonna come to that.
I can be on payroll here very soon.
And I could, uh, nobody. I, we, now, we, I mean, twenty twenty two, there were no, there were no, I don't, I don't know that, but there was nobody there to.
Yes, more just aware and understands the impact it's normal, right there.
It really is the most minimal way to build this.
We do all the properties back here in the pod.
Yeah, yeah.
The way the houses are sitting. We can take that into consideration. Anybody else on the board, any comments on what we just heard?
No, it's before they've said, he said the F A R's. It isn't over, whether it's fifteen, it's just.
So, right, um. Members of the public. Feel free to come up, state your name, any comments, also, it's not a hating or anything, you can just, sorry.
Uh, Tom Fricks, four twenty Canterbury Drive, um, I was here, as you know, last month.
Okay, um, you swear from testimony about the bars, would you, about the, about the truth?
I do, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
So again, I was here last month, that's for the machetes, which you guys approved, thank you very much, I think this is just another case where it's just gonna. Unify the neighborhood, and as you guys have pointed out, I guess I educated pretty well, I think you've been in a couple of memories, and. Um, nothing in this club conforms, but, um, everything works pretty well. And, um, I think what they're gonna be doing is a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. Um, in actuality, they probably have the biggest property in Allendale in the club, and it's still non-conforming. So, and, uh, they got three kids, they need their room, so please, they're going to approve their, uh. Application, which it sounds like, uh, it's on his goods, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Is there a specific chair you want us to reserve for you next?
Yeah, but you said something, I've been in on the payroll, you don't volunteer, right? So just, just remember, it's all volunteer, not. They may pay you, but not.
I think you guys come here to lose weight, it's like a hundred and ten degrees.
Okay.
Power bills now.
Yeah. Any other members of the public, any questions, comments? Okay, seeing done, I bring it back, board, any questions, comments on what we just heard, the application itself? Okay. Um. Mary is always, I mean, this is. Always look to Michael to. The renderings and everything else, and we know what we're looking for. To the big help. So I appreciate that, thank you, and the board for sure, so. And it also helps send you to.
Yes, exactly, they've been on the side.
Exactly. Okay, um, can I have a motion to approve?
I'm sure it's approved, right?
My second, thank you.
Right.
I.
I've got to ask you in one minute, I can put a face.
No, I think Mike mentioned that, you know, all the prior, conditions of the prior approval carry forward unless modified here, the applicant agreed to that. Talked about the condition that these renderings, they'll. Be actually what's developed in the field relative to material and colors, the visiting landscape will remain. And the front of measures control subject to your review, Mike, that.
Yes, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, you're great, you're great. Thank you, alright, now again, let me just make it right, uh, the motion, given everything that we just heard from counsel.
I'm making a motion.
Thank you, sir.
My second.
Thank you.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board member Rosala.
Yes.
Board member Petrino.
Yes.
Board member Dallo.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Board member Butler.
Yes. Um, Mary, you know the drill, okay, so if you're gonna explain.
Every subject.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good luck, you go ahead. Good luck, thank you. Wow. Alright, I put it to the public for any questions, comments, seeing done, I bring it back. Okay, uh, any other businesses, really, nobody here from counsel will be able to say anything. Um. I don't really have anything to put out here, I just, you know, this. I, I, I know that there's a lot of, you know, there's some comments going on and, and small things about, um. Barney Angel, et cetera, et cetera, I personally went to one of the, um. To one of the things, to one of the sessions last night and listened, I don't know if anybody here plans to do that, um. John, I've got thirty one spot, you were with me last night.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. It is what it is, listen, it's an informative session, that's all I can say.
There's one tomorrow night?
There's one tomorrow night at seven thirty, or seven, no, I'm sorry, six o'clock. There's one tomorrow at six o'clock, it goes roughly two hours. Okay, and that's all I'm gonna comment and say, just have to go and listen. Okay? Okay, uh, any other comments, anybody on board? Seeing done, wow, forty minutes, forty minutes, okay. Two applications, two applications, so I just wanna say how much I appreciate the board coming out tonight, and also short, but thank you for everything. Um, our next meeting is.
November, I think it's fifteenth.
Two weeks before Thanksgiving.
No, I'm sorry, November twelfth.
Okay, so we're real early next month again. Um, oh, okay.
Cause of the league.
Next month because of.
The league.
Yes, because of league and municipalities, but I also think. The schools are close, probably Thursday, Friday, still be going, um. What do we have, what do we, what do we, what do you think we have?
We have two residential applications that night.
Okay, alright, so.
Actually, one is residential, but it's owned by a corporation, so they're calling it commercial.
Okay. And we probably won't have a vote exception, so, okay, so again, the Wednesday of that, uh, of November. Um, one other thing that I just want to point out, um, it's been proactive, it's trying to set up next year's meetings. Um, we've always tried to do these meetings on like, the, the third Wednesday, that's the kind of way we've always done this for many years. However, with the holidays coming in there, and then just been doing a great job making sure that. We're taking into consideration not only board members, but the public coming before us. Some of the meetings are kind of scattered. Okay, um. Perhaps, but we'll still be able to vote on them, but I just want to prepare everybody that they're a little early, much like we're doing for next, for next month's meeting, okay? Um, but it all has to do with the school calendar. So just so everybody has a heads up. Okay, and we'll vote on those, we can probably vote on them next month.
I was planning on doing that, so at least everybody knows in advance, you know, for planning vacations and everything.
Okay. So, um, perhaps, perhaps, Linda, what you could do is when we put out our packets for next month. You could throw that in.
Okay.
Alright, maybe we could just, you know, just review it for my comments, okay? Those are that, I'm done, forty, forty three minutes, okay? Thank you, everybody, okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
You, okay, have a great night, thanks for everything. See you in a month.